The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Councilmember James Thorne, who is the pastor of Alpha and Omega Community Baptist Church.
Let's bow heads, please. I am God, not Father in heaven. We thank you for another day, another opportunity together, another opportunity to seek you for wisdom and guidance, to seek you for knowledge, all the things that we need to accomplish, what we set out to accomplish. We invite your spirit to be a part of this meeting this evening. Father, we know that we can't go wrong if we follow you because you're all seeing, all knowing, you have all power and you're in control of everything, even us. Pray for our leaders here in the city, pray for the followers, pray for everybody, and we realize that you're no respect person. Thank you for what you have done, what you're going to do. Thank you for our mayor, your city manager, everybody that's here, here in the town. Pray that we always seek you first before we set out to do what we think is right. In your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. We are honored this evening to have with us Heather Whitney. Heather is a U.S. Army veteran. She served during the War on Terror era, and she will lead us in our pledge. Thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one
It is always exciting when we have the opportunity to present a Moving Forward Giving Back Award. We do not present them often, nor do we present them lightly. These are intended for only those who have given back in an extraordinary way. Our recipient tonight is certainly one of those. Forty years ago, they began making a difference in North Texas, including Grayson County, and their influence has grown exponentially in the years following. He and his wife developed an award-winning business where the philosophy is, the business succeeds only if those around us succeed. And this company provides quality of life wages for almost 500 team members. Over the years, it has become a family business where the children became actively engaged in the success and the assurance that that philosophy would become the company legacy. Our recipient considers himself a citizen of the region. Although his home and business headquarters are in Sherman, he sets the gold standard for regional thinking. He believes strongly that what is good for one of us should be good for all of us. Fourteen years ago, as a member of the Texoma Medical Center Board of Trustees, he helped lead the quest to attract and build a hospital meant to serve the entire region. And the result, a state-of-the-art $300 million hospital at 691 and 75, anchoring a world-class medical campus. His service to the region continues through 21 years on the Board of Trustees, with six of those as the chairman. Our recipient serves on many boards and commissions, and if you look at his resume, he almost always rises to the position of chairman because his natural leadership, his commitment to excellence, and his willingness to give back. He even continues to give back to his alma mater, Mullenberg College, where he graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree. We, as a community, are grateful for his decision to locate and invest in Denison. Over just the last year, our recipient has invested more than $2 million in two major remodels in our city. But for him, it isn't about the investment in the business, it's all about the investment in the community. Our recipient never met a kid he doesn't value, or an independent school district he didn't appreciate. It doesn't matter if they bleed maroon and white, or black and gold. They are our regional future leaders, and he is committed to help make their future bright. On August 1st, his company launched the Pump Some Yellow Jacket Pride Program, where one pump in each of his four locations will be dedicated to support the Denison Independent School District and the mighty Yellow Jackets. With each gallon of gas pumped, two cents will be given to the DISD, and I predict, with our community spirit and Yellow Jacket pride, this represents a very large commitment. By the way, I pumped my first gas yesterday. For our recipient, it is all about giving back and making a difference, no matter where he is or the circumstance. And if that is not enough, he served our great nation in the United States Marine Corps and the United States Army as a First Lieutenant in Combat Intelligence. I am sure, early in this presentation, our recipient realized, the story we told him to get him here tonight is not true. And he, in fact, is the very deserving recipient. He is a very humble man, and I am sure we have sufficiently embarrassed him, and I apologize for that. As mayor of Denison and on behalf of our entire community, it is my highest honor to present the Moving Forward Giving Back Award to the man I know as Mr. Bill, and the world knows as Bill Douglas with double S's. Mr. Bill, your life has made a difference. We are all fortunate you chose North Texas and ultimately our community, and we have all been truly blessed by your giving spirit and your commitment to regional excellence. Mr. Bill, I know of no one that I have ever met that deserves this more than you do, and we are honored to give you the Moving Forward Giving Back Award.
Thank you.
We're honored to be here. We are, we are very fortunate, all of us are very fortunate, to live here in Grayson County and specifically in the northern part of Texas. It's, it's a marvelous place to live because the opportunities are boundless and the people are great. So, thank you, and thank all the Yellow Jackets in the room here. I, I recognize when my daughter showed up, it's a problem.
Well, you know, and, and I enlisted the help of Ron Seals, you know, he was, he, he was in this diabolical plan with me from the beginning, so.
Thanks for the recognition. There, there are hundreds of people that deserve this. I just get the opportunity to pick up the fight, but thank you.
Wow, you can tell that they, that they all came to see Mr. Bill and not to, not to watch the council. I know how we rate, folks. All right. At this point in each council meeting, we set aside time so that citizens may speak on any action item listed on the agenda. And in order to speak, they must fill out a request to speak prior to us reaching this, this point. We have two cards. Bill Majors wishes to speak on 6B, and Dr. Charla Harris wishes to speak on 4B. Dr. Harris, do you want to speak now, or would you rather wait until we reach that agenda item?
I'd like to have her.
Okay, we'll just wait until we reach the agenda item. Okay.
I'll wait.
I know you don't judge, that's why I didn't ask you the question. So, please come up and identify yourself.
All right. How you guys doing tonight? Bill Majors, I'm here in my role as the county judge. And mayor, thank you for putting me on the agenda. She and I had a conversation this morning. So, let me just say, I proudly announce the receipt of a four-year grant from the Judicial Commission on Mental Health to fund the position of the Community Diversion Coordinator for Grayson County. We received this information actually yesterday, and I'm here to provide details on this position in the event that law enforcement wants to consider this before finalizing its budgeting, before you guys finalize the budget in regards to training, et cetera. I understand it's late in the game, been there, done that, but I do think it's important for you, for the, for the council to understand what's going to happen in Grayson County this year. Just so you know, the Commissioners Court, you know, county government is not as streamlined as city, but we had to, we approved this grant application. We received notice of approval yesterday, it was tilted to put on tomorrow's agenda, so we will actually formally approve the grant next Tuesday. It's, it's a done deal, we've already voted on it, so it's going to happen. So, here it is. It's a four-year grant. The first two years pays all expenses, well, it's a four-year grant that pays this expenses and the position, 100% for years one and two, 80% for years three, and 60% for years four. This coordinator will work directly for the courts and will bring attention to mental health cases across the judicial system. It's going to determine best outcomes for the inmate and provides mental health resources for the inmate as opposed to incarceration. The bottom line here is, this coordinator will help delineate between when, when an inmate has a mental health issue and doesn't need to be incarcerated. The goal is for us to reduce our jail population. It will reduce the tax burden on Grayson County taxpayer. It costs all of us $60 per day, per inmate in Gray, in the Grayson County Jail. It will divert and remove citizens from jail to receive mental health care instead of incarceration. It'll create efficiency in the criminal justice system in Grayson County. A person will be moved through the system, in quotes, quicker and more efficiently, thereby saving tax dollars. In short, the efficiencies in this system will, in Grayson County, will increase the likelihood that someone needing mental health resources will receive those resources instead of just being incarcerated in the jail. I applied for this grant on behalf of Grayson County. However, it doesn't happen without support from within the county, so I just want to recognize District Judge Larry Phillips, Sheriff Tom Watt, and District Attorney Brett Smith, and all the county commissioners for their support in this endeavor. Also, on the, on the county level, Texas Community, TCC, Texas Community Center, healthcare organizations and hospitals across the county supported this effort. Grayson County Department of Probation, Four Rivers, and the Texoma Behavioral Health Leadership Team. TBHLT is a unique partner in Grayson County, and Gail Utter and her organization have done that. Chief Gudjel serves for Denison on, on this, on this committee. The purpose of this is just simply to make you aware of this, so that if law enforcement would like to come to you guys with an amendment, what we believe is this, if this doesn't happen this year, it's going to be okay, we're getting our feet wet, but there's going to be an opportunity, what we're trying to do, both on the street level and in the jail level, to divert those people with mental health issues away from the jail. So, this is my heads up, and again, mayor, thank you for getting me on the agenda at the late date. Appreciate your service, guys, have a great night. Take care.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda, item 4B needs to be pulled and addressed separately after voting on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 4B.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on ordinance amending Chapter 18 Public Property, Article 3 Parks and Recreation Areas, Division 3 Parks, Section 18-112 Driving Vehicles or Riding Animals in Parks and on School Grounds to prohibit motorized vehicles of any kind on city trails, and Section 18-113 Damaging, Removing, Et Cetera Property to Prohibit Damage to and Improper Use of City Park Property, and adding Section 18-114 Parking Prohibited to Prohibit Parking in Certain Areas and Overnight Parking. Ms. Fort.
Mayor and council, the reason this item was pulled from the agenda is there was a slight change to the ordinance from what was in your packets. There was a realization that horses should be allowed on equestrian trails, and those are park facilities, so we added an exception to allow for that, so that riding horses on equestrian trails would not be a violation of this ordinance. There is a slight alteration to the agenda language that I think was passed out to add that provision into the ordinance, but that is the only change from what was in your packet.
Questions for Ms. Fort?
Do motorized vehicles include like segways and hoverboards and stuff? So, those aren't allowed on the trails either?
Further questions? Dr. Harris?
Thank you for hearing me out. After hearing that wonderful presentation, I hesitate to complain, so. But what I have is really not a complaint, it's just a request. When it comes to consent item 4B, when discussing the articles, driving vehicles or riding animals in parks or on school ground, I think we addressed the animal issue with, with her. Twice a year, we have a living history. It's hard to portray the 1800s without having a horse there. So, we do have a special horse who has been coming for many years, her name is Penny, and I was concerned how that would affect that. Another issue is, and this may be a question that you'll have to address after I speak, but if that includes ATVs.
ATV?
And golf carts. Because since our property is deemed public park property, and we're the leaseholder, that's what I used to get around. So, if you prohibit us from using that means, since I'm handicapped, it prohibits me from supervising events. And so, we would like an amendment made for the village for special events, so that I can supervise those, and in my place later on someone else. We do have over 14 acres, and it's hard to walk that multiple times a day. And we keep that within our, our gates. So, the last thing that I had was damaging public property and removal. When I read the description of that, it includes alteration of trees and other items that you deem are the property of the city and the park now. My concern is, in the past, if a tree limb threatened one of our houses, our grounds chairman could go outside and take care of that. At this point, if it occurs on a weekend, I can't do that. And so, we would like a special amendment made that we can take care of that if an emergency arises.
Okay, so let me understand, your, your request for ATVs and, and golf carts are during special events?
Only, yes.
Okay. And so, would that be covered, Bobby or Chris or Julie, would that be covered under a special event permit?
Mind if I may interject? There is nothing in the event permit that says either way about ATVs or golf carts. So.
My interpretation is this would just for the trails.
What? Just for the trails, not, not the roadways?
Okay. It doesn't apply to the roadways or parking lots. The, the prohibition against motorized vehicles on other parts of park property has, was already in the ordinance. This ordinance is just adding the trails specifically to the prohibition.
Okay. But my interpretation is that this also prohibits parking in certain areas and overnight parking. When you're talking about this, there's nothing that specifically states on the parking or on the all-terrain use that it does apply just to trails. In fact, the all-terrain use specifically states that on city roadways, within the park.
Yeah, my, my assumption would be that, you know, for a policeholder, city staff, at a special event, that, you know, this wouldn't apply. This applies to the citizens, not necessarily, if the police decide to take an ATV side-by-side down Katy Trail, that's their right, as our law enforcement, you know, if city, city court, Justin's going to chime in and submit.
Yeah, I agree with you, Chris, but in Section 18 through 112, there's the point need, the United States authorized city vehicles, emergency vehicles, approved vehicles for patrol and/or park maintenance, or those that have received a permit from the city authorizing its operation arcs from this section.
Correct, but we're not city employees, and so therefore, if there's not wording there, you and I both know, and I'm speaking specifically to the attorney, that unless it's in writing in a contract, it's not binding. And so.
That section isn't city vehicles only, it's also anyone else that has received a permit authorizing the operation.
Gotcha.
I think about Parker, Texoma Soccer Association, they have a permit to operate a golf cart that's been, you know, pre-authorized at THF Park, and we have certain restrictions within that usage, but I'm sure we can do something very similar and just completely eliminate any concerns for you, Frontier Village. Is that a fair statement, Justin?
Yes.
But, but Julie, you're saying that the language as it is written does not prevent her, or Frontier Village, not her specifically, but Frontier Village, from using an ATV or a golf cart during special events? Well, it would, on the trails it would, but not on the roadways of the park?
On the roadways, it's fine. If you were off a roadway, that was always prohibited. This is just adding the prohibition to the trails, and it adds the exemption that Justin just described for emergencies, if someone has a permit, permission, city employees, et cetera.
And hence, my concern is because our property inside the gates is not on the roadway, it is technically off the roadway and could be interpreted that way.
But it, but it. That's where the ordinance would allow for that particular ATV or golf cart to get a permit for that.
It would allow with a permit, yes.
Okay.
So.
And the parking issue?
Your, your use is not going to be prohibited.
Okay. And the parking issue?
And, and the parking issue?
Yes. Could you please sl, clarify for me? If I understood it correctly, and I just browsed through that section, so please forgive me for asking, is this authorized parking areas? So, does that limit parking for our events to just our front parking area?
I'm not familiar with the grounds enough to, to know.
There's a, there's a limited number of parking areas in front of your office, correct?
That is correct, and if I've got 1,000 people there, that limits the space. Since we have area outside of it, however it's grassed, we've always used that as parking space and aligned the roadways, because, you know, essentially that has been our access point. So, it would limit the size of my events if we can't park on the roadways, or if we can't park on our leased property outside of the gravel.
Justin, would you, you want to come forward?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
Dr. Harris? Wait, just a second. Let's, let's get your question answered.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, for the questions. They're very good. Good evening, mayor and council. There's, this is a very comprehensive work of different ordinances. Parking in particular, what, one of the things, the challenges we have in particular is at Texoma Health Foundation Park, when we have a lot of different activities, we will have tournament providers who come in the night before and start parking their trailers on our premises. And it, with, with some of the parking challenges we have, we need to prevent essentially the park being overrun by people staying the night there, plus the safety aspect of people staying the night at the park when we, we have no staff there, no operations. So, in coordination with our, our safety teams, we felt it would be best that we would just prohibit overnight use, definitely not trying to interfere with some of those other activities. As far as language goes, I, I'm not sure how that should articulate, but those are some of the main reasons behind that. Other park systems too, we just don't want people staying the night in our parks.
Right.
For safety reasons. So, that's really the main, main key we're trying to hear.
Well, and, and mayor, one of the thought, I would think that any of these concerns we could probably address in the operational lease agreement, instead of worrying about it affecting directly with an overall ordinance that's designed for all park systems, we could just take care of it in some sort of amendment or clarification to those operational leases.
Yes, and I'm actually could clarify that right now.
Would that be okay?
So, and that's what I'm asking for, just as we did before, that something be amended right now by motion to clarify this, and that we not have to come back and ask for clarification later.
Well. Well, you, you can't make a motion to amend their contract because their contract isn't on the agenda this evening. That would have to be on a future agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm not asking to amend my contract. My contract will not be amended. What we're asking is for amendment to your consent, as we did before, and that it be changed to exclude Frontier Village.
Well, I'm not sure that, that a comprehensive ordinance that we are addressing, that we want to single out a particular entity within a park. If, we don't want overnight parking in any of our parks, and that includes Loy Lake Park, even though it includes Gateway, Frontier Village. So, I, I, I don't think the amend, amending the ordinance, I'm, I'm speaking simply as one vote. I don't think amending the ordinance is something that we want to do tonight. I think this has been well-studied and is something that we want to happen across our park system. So, you know, addressing a specific use for Frontier Village is something we can do at a later date.
If that's the way you choose to handle that, then I have to respect that, but please understand that it would be a violation of our contract, and we will take whatever action necessary to see that we continue operating as we always have.
Well, I don't think, Dr. Harris, that the intent of this was in any way to alter your operations. I, I just don't. I, I just don't think, and, and if you, if you have operated, I, I don't know what in particular, we've, we've addressed a number of things, so I don't know if this is the overnight parking. I don't know what.
I'm not concerned about the overnight parking. I do agree with that amendment. We have a homeless problem there and have, ever since I took over five years ago. So I'm not disagreeing with that. My concern is the limitation it'll put on my parking during events. If, and I can't, I can't take the word of the council that someone will come along who isn't familiar with our discussion today and not take action if we're parked along the roadways. So that is why we're asking, that specifically. As I stated before, the animals, the, the golf cart, those were my concerns with the other portion. I mean, if we had known about this, if there was communication and we were told these things are possible, that might not allude to me having to come up here and ask in front of the city council to have these things amended. But there's not that communication. We have to read it in the agenda, just like everyone else, and come up here and hope we address things in time. Obviously, you don't feel that this needs to be amended today, even though a motion can be made and it can be passed, we've done it before. So we'll address it in a different one.
Well, it's up to the council. I, I get one vote, a discussion from council.
Mayor, if I could real quick, I, I think this allows for application to be made for a permit for the golf cart or ATV. I believe that when you apply for an event permit, which does apply to them now, that you have to submit what your parking plan is, and so the parking would be approved as part of the event permit. I mean, just like with any other, if any other entity wanted to have an event in a park. So I, I think there is a, a means for addressing those things. It's your choice how you want to address them, but I don't see any legal risk with violating their contract just because you pass those ordinance.
And my concern with is while you speak of us as another entity, we, there is no other entity that operates within a park that has a lease with you other than TEL and Frontier Village. And so we're asking that exceptions be made. We're not new to the park, the city is. And we were told that we would be, that things would be grandfathered in, and to this point, they have not.
Well, there, there is a procedure with the park belonging to the city where, where special events have to be permitted.
Yes.
And, and that, you know, that is with, with any entity regardless, whether it's Frontier Village or TEL. I, and, and, and that is something that will have to happen in order to be able to control and, and everything that happens within our parks. So I think that the, the, the problems that you see will be addressed within a special event permit. And, and it will not in any way affect the way that you're able to operate. What I'm hearing is you saying that you, you want to be able to operate as you have in the past. Well, I can't tell you that you have, you can operate as you have in the past because in the past you didn't have to get a, a special event permit because you, the park was operated by the county. But, but that, that is an entirely different story. So I think the global ordinance is to address things in general in our parks. And I think that is important to our community that we do that. And, and we're in no way trying to prohibit things that occur at Frontier Village. We're just asking you to address those things through a, a special events permit. And, and that's no different than, than anyone else would have to do, so.
This has become a discussion of special events permit. We weren't asking about that. That's not what we're asking you to address.
Well, I know what you're asking. You're asking us to amend the ordinance and to exclude you. And I don't think that, well, I've not heard from the rest of the council, so I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. But I don't think that we need our ordinance to be used to exclude you from, from requirements of the city. And, and, and a special use permit with a parking plan would address your problem. So I don't, I don't know where that is an issue, so. Counsel, anybody?
I agree with what you're saying. A special use permit would take care of all of your issues. I've been there for events and parked in the grass and parked on the road, and I understand personally the number of cars that need to be parked. But again, if we started making, singling out different entities for all of our ordinances, then we end up with a hodgepodge of stuff that it's unenforceable. So I think, again, the special use permit will answer everything you have, Dr. Harris, and I think everything will work out fine.
Okay, well, we will be back if it doesn't, but thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate your time. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Discussion from council. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending chapter eighteen, public property, article three, parks and recreation areas, division three, parks, section eighteen through one twelve, driving vehicles or riding animals in parks and or school grounds to prohibit motorized vehicles of any kind on city trails in section eighteen dash one thirteen, damaging, removing, et cetera, properties, to prohibit damage to and improper use of city park property and adding section eighteen dash one fourteen, parking prohibited, to prohibit parking in certain areas and overnight parking and providing an exception to allow horses on equestrian trails.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Prokhem Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item four C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on an agreement with Signet Strategies LLC for coordination, planning, promotion and marketing of Denison's sesquicentennial. I, I got it out. A year-long celebration for. Oh, well, you know, here we go.
Moving right along.
Moving right along to public hearings. Okay.
You gave me a scare, Mayor.
Receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on a resolution adopting the Community Development Block Grant 2021 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mayor, I was getting worried there.
Would you get me out of the hole I dug myself?
I thought I must have printed off the wrong agenda, so.
Well, I just, I just wanted to prove that I could say sesquicentennial.
Thank you. As referenced on the agenda caption, this is a request to adopt the 2021 Annual Action Plan as required by HUD. We have several funding areas that we'd like to be able to fund for the coming year. As noted in the staff report, we have a significant amount of money from HUD, a little over $287,000 allocated for FY21. The Community Development Steering Committee has recommended that a little over $24,000 be used for administration, $30,000 used for code enforcement, and the balance being a little over $190,000, almost $195,000 for the section 108 loan repayment, as we did for the street hab repair, water and sewer program. We've held the required public notices. We had the meeting before the Community Development Program Committee. Have not received any comments, so therefore, the staff recommends adoption of the resolution. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Webb.
How much longer do we have on our, our note before it's paid off?
I meant to, it, it's getting closer. It's getting, and I'll be glad to send that out in the weekly report of how much time we have left.
And then when we're doing repairs for properties and it's only for owner occupied?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Webb? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution adopting the Community Block Grant 2021 Annual Action Plan.
There is a, a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance creating a conditional use permit, CUP, for a restaurant with a drive-through at the northwest corner of FM 120 and Lane Drive, case number 2021-96CUP. Mr. Medina.
Thank you and good evening. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. This is just west of Lane Drive and north of FM 120. Subject property is zone local retail, which in this case will require a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through. Here's the elevation of the proposed Chick-fil-A. The site consists of 5,100 square feet, sorry, that's the building size, a two-lane drive-through with the capacity to hold up to 43 vehicles and 70 parking spaces. This is the initial site plan, which we're using as our exhibit today. The applicant will submit, I'm sorry, has submitted a site plan and replat with a little bit more details and on the, the next version that we have has a fire lane and shows the sign locations and things like that. Planning and zoning commission will be acting on that pretty soon. So as a recap, the proposed CUP is for a Chick-fil-A consisting of 5,100 square feet with a drive-through, a two-lane drive-through. Property is on local retail. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval on the 27th, and city staff also recommends approval. The applicant is also here tonight as well.
Questions for Mr. Medina?
Do you know, are we going to have to make any improvements to Walker Street? Will it be able to, to handle some of that flow on that back end?
At this point, I don't think we're anticipating any additional traffic, or not traffic, but improvements to Walker. While some vehicles will more than likely exit off a walker, given the site location and the drive-through window, it's hard to see in this version, is actually on the east side of the building. So what we're anticipating are vehicles to exit, hit lane, and then jump back down to 130 to get back to where they need to go.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. I'll see how quickly we get a motion on this one. Motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance creating a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through at the northwest corner of FM 120 and Lane Drive.
There is a motion by Mayor Prokhem Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for, for visiting our meeting tonight. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on authorizing fiscal year 2021 budget amendment for a pump at Iron Ore Lift Station. Ms. Wagner, there she is. You faded into the blue of the chair.
Right. I'm a little shorter than everyone else, so good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, what, what we want to present to you tonight is, on Friday, July 9, 2021, pump number two at Iron Ore Lift Station completely stopped working. And the Public Works Director, Carrie Jones, reached out to me and said, "We have an emergency purchase we need to make, and we are allowed to do that if it's an emergency." So I went ahead and gave her approval to go ahead and move forward with making this purchase. But for transparency, I always like to bring these things to council, especially when these dollars start getting on up there, so. That pump had been actually pieced together with various parts to keep running and was now beyond repair. The newest pump was in the shop, and we didn't have an ETA on when it would be completed. That left only one functioning pump there at Iron Ore, which is not enough to keep it operating properly. So they're currently operating a portable pump that has to be maintained by staff around the clock to keep the lift station running properly. So the new pump is priced at $48,590.53. That's $48,590.53. It can be delivered within a couple, two or three weeks as of the time that we purchased it. So staff has already requested two pumps for the next year's budget, obviously with this emergency purchase, that cuts their request down to one for next year. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment.
Questions for Ms. Wagner?
So is the plan to use the, the pump that's in the shop right now to replace an older one on the one that's still working? And then this one will replace the damaged, and then we'll have an extra?
I'm going to let Carrie speak to that. I told her she might need to.
So Iron Ore Lift Station is actually built for four pumps, and so we actually will be adding a third pump.
And they're hoping for that fourth one during the budget.
Any other questions from council? Just a motion?
I move to approve the current budget amendment as presented.
There is a motion by Councilmember Court Riden and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion and receive direction from council on the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Good evening again. Back here to talk more about budget. Just a little more extensive information tonight, but we'll really have the meat of our budget to discuss at the August 16 meeting prior to adoption on September 7th, but we'll kind of talk about the calendar here shortly. This is just an update to general fund numbers, total revenues, total expenditures. Of course, we have the fiscal year 21 budget compared to 21 projected. You have your beginning cash balances are the same. Obviously, your total revenues are going to be different from, from the budget. The projections are higher. We talked a little bit about this during the budget workshop, how that's CARE Act, CARES Act funding and TERRAP. CARES Act was reimbursements of expenses that we actually expensed in 2020 and received those funds back, so that's why the revenues are up. Expenditures are fairly similar. Total budget transfers in, the same budget it transfers out, very similar. Ending cash balances, there is a difference, obviously, because of the CARE Act funding. We anticipated being at 54 days, which our minimum is 60, maximum 90, that we try to stay within. But based on the CARES Act funding coming in to reimburse us for expenses already spent, it gets us up to 67 days for the end of this current fiscal year for general fund. On general fund for fiscal year 2022 proposed, the cash balance, obviously, would match whatever the cash balance ends up at the end of the year, at September 30th. Then total revenues, 33 million. That is a little higher than this current year as well, and that includes anticipated reimbursements from FEMA and then our ARP funds that we talked about as well at the last council meeting in July. And, and then total expenditures, similar to years past. Total budget transfers in, that's our aquatic fund transfer. Then what I've done is I've set aside, based on where we want to be as far as days of reserve, kind of said, okay, where are we at now? We have this revenue, we have these expenditures, so what can we use for capital equipment, line item increases and personnel? And so I've plugged in the number of 2.6 million there, showed our total budget transfers out, gives us an ending cash balance of 6.3. It leaves some money on the table, revenues over expenditures, that gets us to days of reserve to 70. So that's the anticipation that I'm looking for when I presented August 16th, is where we can, we will be. We're running numbers almost daily, and so we'll have updated numbers for you again August 16th. We'll have conversations about what those capital equipment looks like, what the line item increases, trying to get everyone back to kind of pre-COVID of, you know, training. We cut training out, we, you know, we cut a lot of the budget out and put a lot of hiatus on a lot of projects. And so we kind of want to get back into the groove of things, as you see, we're growing with Chick-fil-A and, and you build it, they will come. So that's just my commentary. Utility fund, similar situations here you have, except that we had a lot more expenses here this year due to our winter storm event. And so you have your fiscal year 21 budget, your fiscal year 21 projected. Of course, beginning cash balance is very similar, your revenues a little higher. We've had a pretty dry summer this last month, May, we were like going, whoa, wait a minute, a lot of rain. Moise, that's always in the back of my mind with revenues for water, sewer, but things have really ticked up the last few weeks. It's like, you can rain over there, just don't rain here, no. Total budget transfers out, very similar. So our ending cash balance is actually less than what we had projected for our budget or what we had budgeted for, and of course, we've talked about this, this has to do with our winter storm event. And so we're anticipating, we thought we'd be at 75 days, and now we're anticipating 64 days. And also, when you're looking at these numbers, you're like, well, how does that, you know, work out? But when I look at days of reserve and the days, what one day's expense equals, that's going to change every year because your expenses go up every year, okay? So your dollars that are one-day reserved actually go up each year. So because your expenses go up now. A lot of that includes capital and things of this nature. So because your expenses go up now, a lot of that includes capital and things of this nature, but I like to capture everything. That's projected for this year. For next year, anticipating, and I have it up there, $470,000 coming from FEMA, which will help offset some of that loss from this current year. Beginning cash balance at 2.5, total revenues, anticipated reimbursement, and then our expenditures. Did the same thing here, looking, okay, how much, what do we have on the table to work with? And how can we keep ourselves solvent at the end of the day, the 70 days? And so for capital equipment, line item increases, and personnel, $575,000. And then we have our total budget transfers out, we do every year, and then our ending cash balance at 2.8, which leaves some money on the table to get us to the 70 days. If you look back here, general fund, I'm anticipating 2.6 to add to the budget for capital, line item increases, personnel. Utility fund, $575,000. That gets us, you know, 2.3 million? No, hang on. That was the FEMA. It's a little over 3 million, actually. And then we look here, what our requests have been, $16 million. So we're doing what we can with what we have. Lots of requests out there, lots of needs. And so we're looking at and talking to different personnel, the ELT, the executive leadership team, and saying, what do you need? What are your priorities? And we ask them to prioritize that during the budget process because there's only so much money to go around. We want to make sure that we're getting people what they need first. What are the priorities? And so that's what we're looking at, and we'll bring back to council at the next meeting. So today, August 2nd, more budget presentations. August 6th, this Friday, the city manager files a proposed budget with the city clerk. That will actually be a draft budget, and will probably change every week. We will update that every week, and then as we receive guidance from council, we'll make those changes. August 16th, budget presentation, and then at that point, we'll do a resolution to call a public hearing on the tax rate. I will send out a memo to council to let you know what we're proposing to present to council, so it's not a surprise. I don't like surprises. I like you to have a heads up and have those, you know, make sure you, if you have questions, you can reach out or ask those questions prior to calling that public hearing. And that's just the resolution, to call the public hearing on August 16th. Then we will publish in the newspaper and on the website that Wednesday what the council, if they've moved forward with the resolution on Monday night, what that's going to look like. And then September 7th, we will hold the public hearing on the budget and the tax rate, and then we will consider an act on adoption of the budget and then consider an act on adopting the ordinance for the tax rate that evening. And this is a presentation only, no motion to be made, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Questions for Ms. Wagner?
I'm all for keeping our water and sewer revenue healthy, but I do need you to pray for a little rain, Renee. Just a little. I can't keep moving. We have a hose.
Keep watering. Please just keep watering.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As Ms. Wagner said, this was an information-only item and does not require action by the council. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time, as deemed necessary during the meeting, to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with the city attorney regarding employment of city manager. Consult with city attorney regarding potential acquisition of land by city and/or related contracts. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of value of real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position, Section 551.072. Consult with city attorney regarding potential acquisition of land by city and any related contracts. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, Section 551.074. Discuss the appointment, employment, and/or job duties of the city manager. The time is 6:54, and we are now in executive session.